Call for the Selectmen meeting's daughters Tuesday, February 5th, 10:00 AM. And the first thing on the agenda is review request from the Fire Chief. Mr. Bryant will appoint Justin Wilber as a full-time firefighter paramedic. Here is Spiel, who is he?
Well, he lives currently in Middleboro, but he grew up in town, he has some roots here. He's highly educated, one of our best qualified fighters. Responds back to the station pretty frequently. He is a paramedic, he has a bachelor's degree in paramedicine and a minor in fire science. And he's a semester away from having a master's degree in emergency management. Great guy.
And we have to send him to the academy, is that true?
It's true. He does have his five foot one and two already though.
How many weeks is the academy?
I'd be guessing.
It doesn't?
Yeah, it's pretty long.
Least.
And as a side note, the academy is, if it's the way in getting people into the academy, it probably wouldn't be until November if we could get enough.
Okay.
But he is able to work up until that point.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I have none.
I'll make a motion and we appoint Justin Wilber as a full-time firefighter paramedic effective January 31st, I guess why are we doing that on February 5th of 2019? Subject to a medical exam, successful completion of a physical ability test, successful completion of the full-time firefighter recruit academy, and successful completion of a one-year probationary period.
I'll second that, and just one other question on that. Do you think he'll be out of the recruit academy by the time the one-year probationary period ends, or do we need to kind of, are we gonna have an issue?
I think it'll be, it'll probably, it'll be close. It'll be close.
Okay. I guess.
Yeah.
We have to deal with it?
Well, right, right, actually, it's only the probationary period that in theory is the one year.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think we're good.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second thing on the agenda is review and vote to award bid for portable restrooms for John Pond Park. And Mr. Mike Nolan is here, so if you want to speak to it, Mike?
Okay, John, we've been working on this since I got back on the board. And I understand over the last five years, there's been several plans. We've had folks willing to build a cinder block building, we've had, I have a quote in here for a stick-built building, we have talked to Old Colony about building a building. All comes back to, it needs a septic system. Septic system, there is a DEP thing in here, and the septic system is gonna be problematic in that it's too close to neighboring estates, so it would have to be way out by the parking lot. So we started looking at other options, and I know one that you had mentioned, or Nate had mentioned, was like a shelter with a pad to put porta-potties in. The other option is modular, mobile restrooms that were couple to. It's just that, that would, I mean, that would be okay, that's what they're using now, but it's been, you know, my kids are, my girls are 24, 26, and 29, and they used porta-potties back then. I mean, I think it's time to put some bathrooms in there for the girls, for the women. There's blooper ball, there's a brand-new Freetown Lakeville Soccer Association, they're very active, they've already been down there, done a lot of work down there. We have a new blooper ball league starting, which will be co-ed, we're gonna have tournaments down there, so I just, we just felt that it was time to actually put bathrooms down there. Now, the reason we came, you know, to the conclusion of these mobile ones is we're doing all these research with all these different folks, we came across these, and it serves a couple purposes. A, we don't need to do the septic system, and B, it avoids a lot of vandalism issues, because come the end of softball season, we crank it up, I don't know if you have a picture of that?
Yep.
On wheels, crank it up, tow it back over here to Ted Williams, cover it with a tuck, you know, winterize, and it's safe. So I understand you had some resonance about whether you wanted to spend the money on that, so.
Right. So I certainly, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. I mean, yeah, I mean, certainly, I know I played blooper ball.
Okay.
I also, you know, also, my daughter was playing softball for a little while, and it's certainly an issue that always comes up over and over again, is not having restrooms or having porta-potties, are they clean, are they being maintained, things like that. So from my perspective, you guys run an enterprise fund.
Right.
If you choose to use your money in this manner, and you believe that it's the best for what you're intending to do, I have no problem with it at all. You know, I think that one of the things that I would question too is whether or not this could be used for other events, or if it would really be more, once you kind of set it up, it's there, and it's there for a period of time, or?
It'll be there from March till October.
Okay.
So I mean, I guess if you have, you know, I don't know, you say Blooper Ball in a house or something, it's possible that we could set it up for that? We haven't really, we kind of wanted to keep it for John Pond Park, but, you know, not to jump ahead here, but we're, I'm also working on these fields over here, and there's a simulation that there can be no permanent buildings over there. We may be coming to you for another one, at least in about two or three years.
Right.
Because that would be a perfect thing for that.
Yeah, and your enterprise fund, I think retained earnings was 150, 160?
175. What was it? Oh, right now?
Maybe 170.
It was 175, and then, well, we're pretty much with this in the fields, and we're repaving the basketball courts and tennis courts, and it's also been paving.
Yeah, so the capital plan.
Yeah, so that's, we're pretty much gonna be at the limit of it.
Yeah, are you guys running a budget surplus this year too? Or, not really sure, it's kind of half way through.
I don't know yet.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to tell, because you're coming up to the spring season too, with weddings season and all that stuff too, so. Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't have, you know, I'm sure that you can do a temporary thing, or you can do something that's less expensive, but you guys have had a lot of conversations about this, and I think, you know, how long is this trailer kind of, is guaranteed, and how long is it?
Well, it's got a five-year guarantee for the one that we chose, that was the other thing, we chose the one that was not below its bid by $1,200 and some odd dollars. But the second bid did not meet all the specifications. We didn't want to put anything down there that's gonna have particle board or wood, and it does have, was it sub-fourths, or wood on the other one?
Sub-walls.
Sub-walls, or something, they had wood.
Wildwood, yeah.
And I don't know if you've ever had an RB?
Yeah.
After a few, you know, it starts sucking water up, and we don't want that. I did talk, this is, this one that we were recommending, was highly, highly recommended by the city of New Bedford. They have one of these that they use down at the beach, and they've had it for about six years, and Mark Champagne, who was the parks director down there, couldn't be more effusive in his praise for it, he really, they thought it was a really good thing, and they, we're looking for like 20 years, maybe 20 years under it.
Okay.
Now, the other thing I would point out, that, like you said, we, we had, this was in the budget last year, and we, we, you know, the money was appropriated for it.
Right, there was a capital article, right?
Yeah.
So do we need to rescind, and how does?
I think it's in this year's, in this year's budget.
Right.
You've set aside.
Well, I mean.
I think it's in this year's too.
It is, yeah, no, yeah, this year, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, we were working on 2020, on 2000, yeah.
Yeah, it's in this year's.
Yeah.
So I think Franklin Menez, who's our highway superintendent, worked in the Park Department of New Bedford, and although they do have one of these, one of these, or one similar to this, they're going porta-potties, according to Franklin. But having said that, let me start back, that what Mitzi said, that you have the right to spend out of your own, not surplus account to?
Retained earnings.
Retained earnings account, and does not necessarily need the Selectmen's approval to do this. I think Rita brings it to us because it's a significant purchase, and she's the procurement officer, because I certainly, so I don't want to bring this to a vote myself, because I would vote against it for a variety of reasons. You certainly have worked on this since you came back, but it's been worked on for years, whether it's five years or seven years, with all those plans, all that donated time, all the way from Mr. DeRozier, doing plans for a fixed building, which would have a tight tank, because a septic system really is out there. So a tight tank could be done, and that was a substantial building, and with water, but a pumped-out tight tank that you would winterize once you were done with the season. But, and then there was other options that one of the citizens came to me today, that he had offered back several years ago, and did a reoffer today, that obviously was a port pad with cinder blocks, with a built-in roof and walls, with, that once again, back to porta-potties. Now, I'm not gonna convince you of this, but I've been to many functions, usually down in the Pennsylvania area, where the porta-potties that were rented were always handicap accessible, they were all handicap accessible. They had flowers in them, they had mirrors in them, you thought you were in a fancy bathroom. But I'm not gonna convince you of that, because you've done all this legwork for this. But I don't want to bring it to a vote, because I certainly would vote against it. When someone looks at me and says, "I'm willing to do something for free," not exactly what you want, but for free, I'd take them up on it.
Well, what?
If I didn't like it, I would then do something different, but no one likes the idea of the porta-potties, and I get it. So, so we don't have to vote on it, and they have the right to spend their money the way they want. I know Rita likes the comfort level of us approving it, I just wouldn't approve it. Free is better.
Well, I think the issue too is, you know, when we looked at the Cowboy Shack and some of the other items, where if people really want to try to help the community, and they want to donate their time, they want to donate their materials, the problem is procurement. So we get into this issue of, you know, okay, it's been five years, you've been trying to work on this, there's a solution in front of us, I think, from my perspective, I think, you know, I'm glad to see that there's a solution, and if this is something where, again, you know, you're gonna be utilizing the same type of structure when you get the LaFrost Fields squared away, you know, it's.
Yeah, well, I actually, in here, I have three, three of the proposals are for free.
Oh, I know.
We ran into that whole procurement process.
And they came to my office, my office, my dumpy office today, and once again reiterated that they'd be happy to do fundraisers, they'd be happy to do the porta-potties, the pad, the building, I'll say in their own how they do that, I don't know. But, so, I, I don't need to vote on this, because I'm gonna vote against it, Mitzi might vote for it, so then it doesn't go anywhere. So I don't want to vote on it, simply because we don't have to vote on it. You can spend the money any way you want.
Well, actually, the Selectmen did vote, anything over $10,000.
Well, we voted, we voted to authorize the money, so I'm not voting to spend it this way, that's all.
So why don't we table it?
Which is not a big deal. Yeah, you can table it.
Until we have a third member.
Sure.
Because that'll determine, I guess, which way it goes.
Well, right, but, but we still don't have to authorize, we've authorized the money. How much money did we do in the budget, in the capital budget last year for this, do you know?
Forty-five.
Yeah.
Forty-five.
Yeah, so they have the money. I'm just, I get it, I'm just not part of that. Free is better. And, and so, you, so, but we don't have to vote on it, we authorized the 45, do what you want with the 45.
It's really just awarding a bid.
Yeah, right.
So it's.
The Selectmen voted anything over $10,000, I bring to you to avoid.
Right. Well.
So we're just gonna?
Then you can wait, then you can wait for the third person, and hopefully, hopefully, Mitzi and Aaron vote for it, that's all.
And Aaron will be here later, if you want to come out of Executive today and bring it back up.
I could do that, Mike certainly doesn't have to be here, I certainly have the same information that Mike has. I just wouldn't do it, that's all. It's not a big deal. You don't need my blessing.
Okay. Well, I'm a little confused though, whether you're saying we don't need the approval for?
Well, I'm saying you don't need the approval, she's the procurement officer.
Yeah, so we give a policy.
She can procure whatever $45,000 she wants, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think it's a policy that we voted on, which is, anything over $10,000, we wanted to have come back to Selectmen to award the bid.
Yeah, so, I mean, not to step ahead again here, but we're working on these fields over here. We're trying to keep each step of the work under $10,000, you know, the electricity's going in this week or next, we have a well-being bill, everything's gonna be, but there is, when they get to the point where the irrigation system goes in, that's gonna be more than $10,000. So I guess I, we, we're gonna need to do this whole process again, right?
Get the pumps.
And come before you folks, or not.
I'll vote for the irrigation.
Yeah.
You can, you can pre-ask me what I would vote for. I've always said, free is better.
Yeah.
We've messed around on this for five to seven years.
Yeah.
So I haven't changed my mind, free is still better.
Well, it's free to the taxpayer.
Free to the taxpayer.
Paid for by weddings.
That's right.
And a bar bill.
And a bar bill.
Seventeen percent.
Yeah, well, you better have a surplus this year of $150,000 to continue to recharge the account.
I mean, but that's also up to them, through business enterprises, to take a look and see what you want to charge for a user fees, so.
So we can table it, if we're still in session when Aaron gets here, we'll reopen, you don't have to come back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, Rita. Are we, are we gonna do budgets now, is that the overall, that's the third item on the agenda, review the 2000?
Yeah, so the?
Twenty budget summary?
The goal is to do no more than a half an hour.
Yep.
And just kind of go over the budget summary.
Set an alarm clock. Go as long as you want.
Ten minutes.
Go ahead.
All right.
You can, you can start giving your perspective, or I'll give you my perspective.
Okay. So Rita put together the budget summary, so everything he said, that's the yellow highlight, we still don't have an update from those department heads on their budget?
On the expense.
Okay.
But I could just point out two things on the revenue. I should have highlighted, the 40S right now on the governor's budget is 151,000 less than what we received in 2019.
But you did hear Mark that, you just didn't highlight, but it's here, Mark.
Yeah, we were getting about 30,000 more in lottery aid, and I did not touch estimated receipts, so that'll be another, I feel that we can up at probably 100,000 or 200,000.
Yeah, what's the, the small increase, the $50,000 increase just in there, from?
Because I plugged in actual, that's why I went back. We went to town meeting, but then.
Yeah, those are the other items we read through.
And once we did the tax recap, it actually, and then overlay, I did not lash, this year we did not reserve anything for the overlay, because I checked with Todd, and there's 657,000 in the overlay surplus.
Yeah, and it's funny, because I guess when you look at the revenue, and maybe we'll start with the revenue side, certainly, you know, we've got new growth coming in at 250, which is somewhat conservative, but I'm good with that, I know that the economy's starting to slow down a little bit, so I'm happy with using 250 in there. And then we have our debt exclusions, which, a little bit less than last year, and our estimated receipts kind of hanging steady. Free cash we have using in here, so there's a couple of things up here, just the free cash of 183, and then no overlay reserve. So our total starting point is negative $50,000, with everybody's budget request in here, except for when you get to page two, which is the schools.
Right.
So I want to just briefly talk about the school budget, and where we are, and the required local contribution. I know that tonight is a regional finance subcommittee meeting, I cannot attend, but they are talking about the budget, I think unveiling it tomorrow night at the school committee. So I don't know where the budget is going to fall, but there are some favorable items that are sitting here in front of us with regards to the school budget this year. So Rita's included $342,000 as a two-and-a-half percent increase on the total that we put into the school district last year. It doesn't account for anything on Old Colony, and I know we have 127 students, I don't know if.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if there, that required one up.
Yeah, it, I kind of looked, but I didn't know if we had something from last year on Old Colony, it's just the assessment sheet.
I can, I can get it.
Yeah, if you have that, that would be great, because I looked at it, and it's at 1,368 is our required local contribution. We have 127 students going to Old Colony this year. So a couple of things with the school budget. So last year, after, there were a couple odd things. So after the budget was set, there was a switch in the required local contribution between Freetown and Lakeville that happened, again, similar to what happened in that year that there was a lawsuit that we brought, but it was both contributions ended up shifting higher for Freetown and Lakeville, didn't matter in the end due to the allocation formula. But what happened also was that the transportation reimbursement went up. So when you look at what's on here in the budget request from the transportation side, where it was 484, 201 last year, that didn't account for the additional almost 400, $345,000 that the transportation reimbursement increased last year. So when you look at where the transportation reimbursement is currently in the governor's budget, it's up another 293, 553 over what we have budgeted in here.
How much, 290?
293, 553.
Yep.
Their Chapter 70 went up $56,000. So the schools, when I say what they're gonna be able to contribute to their budget as a chunk, this year is another $350,000, and that's through the additional Chapter 70 and the additional transportation over last year.
Right.
So it's kind of, whatever they decide for a budget increase, if they're at 1.2 million, then we're taking that 350 off the top, and then the rest is gonna be split between Freetown and Lakeville. So wherever their increase is gonna land, I assume their increase is gonna be at least $800,000 on contractual obligations, health insurance, add all that in, I'm gonna say they're gonna come in probably around 1.2 million, that's my guess, I don't know, I'm stabbing in the dark.
Divided between two.
After you take out the top, which is, there's actually another piece. So whatever their increase ends up being, what we'll take away from it to determine where our contribution lies, is the 349, which is the increase they got in Chapter 70, the increase in transportation aid of 293, plus, we can't forget the $125,000 that we gave them last year.
For E and D.
To go into E and D. So the total there is 475. So again, if they come up with 1.2, we're taking off 475 from the top, and then we're pretty much splitting it. The population is pretty similar, the split is 56.83% to Lakeville, and 43.17 to Freetown, so the Lakeville population went up slightly in comparison.
Right.
And our required local contribution went up, and sort of Freetown's in an amount of 55.8% of the allocation, so it's about the same, it's about 56%. So whatever that increase is, that's where we're gonna see it fall to the bottom line. So I think overall, this is actually a pretty decent representation.
Right.
Of where we'll end up, with the two-and-a-half percent increase that's on here.
Yep.
That being said, Old Colony is kind of the?
I do have Old Colonies.
Oh, perfect, from last year, yeah. So if that was 1,368. Ouch. So our required local contribution for Old Colony's up about $105,000. Now, I want to know what Old Colony did, and we should make sure we tell the members of the school committee in Old Colony, what they ended up doing with their additional transportation reimbursement last year. So I don't know if they're going to be, you know, adjusting that down, and we've never really followed their numbers this closely, but the numbers are getting pretty high, and we're the largest contributor now to the school district, so I want to take a sharper pen to that going forward on this.
Right.
So.
Right, because certainly, taxpayers don't necessarily know that both Old Colony and Bristol Aggie, however, the state reimburses one, and we contribute to that, that it costs over $18,000 per student to send a student to either Old Colony or Bristol Aggie. So keeping that in perspective, you could go to you and ask Dartmouth for less money as a college student.
Yeah.
So the cost of educating through a tech school is probably about $5,000 more, if we say that to educate a student through the normal high school is about $13,500, plus and minus, the Volk schools are about $5,000 more. And we certainly want to have that discussion with the high school, our own regional school, which you do, to say, listen, you just can't say that your students stayed the same if they went to Old Colony, we have to pay more of our share. But just to point that out to the public that watches it, that it costs over $18,000 to send kids to Volk schools.
And Bristol Aggie, I'm still using, they've switched how our assessment is, so this year we do have, I would say, at least 100,000 too much, so I kept it at the same, because if those 17 students do go next year, it should be around 353, plus any increase, their tuition goes up a couple hundred dollars every year. But if all 17 don't go, it's roughly $18,000 per student.
Okay, so, very significant.
Right, and that can be redirected, so of course, our largest component is education, so I think it's, Old Colony is gonna be the one that we're gonna really need to kind of watch overall this year.
Yeah.
That being said, every other budget line item includes everybody's bucket list request, where we are right now. So a couple things that we didn't do, I guess facilities management?
Nate did his budget today.
Okay.
I don't think we'll see a whole, any major increases with all Nate's budgets, Concon, Florida Health.
Okay.
But we got that last night, so we'll be updating everything.
And I'd like to get from Todd to, I guess, maybe through January, that when he's ready with the budget actual year-to-date, yeah?
I should be getting that this week, yeah.
Because I know we had the surplus, about $200,000 or $300,000 in all the budget line items from the previous year that closed out into free cash, so just to make sure that we're kind of staying on top of what people are requesting and what they ask for as we start to go through budget requests.
Right, right.
The next page, I think we can talk about miscellaneous items. So I'm comfortable with the reserve fund, I know last year we put in an extra $50,000, which was at the Fall Town Meeting. I don't mind if that becomes more of a Fall Town Meeting need, if that's the case.
The extra 50, where did that go?
It went into the reserve fund, we did that at the November Town Meeting, and that was designed so the Finance Committee could have a little bit more discretion to use that money for things that weren't just snow and ice.
Okay, because 200 of it was snow and ice.
Right, yeah, so we gave them another 50, just for unexpected.
Right, because it's out of the, this year, and if we're lucky, I'll change you, we don't have any snow, I guess.
Right, I know.
Very little.
And I guess, you know, the point would be then, what we would do is, I don't mind using that as a fall tool as well, to say, hey, you know, if we have more through free cash, I'm happy to put more into the reserve fund for those one-time expenses. The pension, of course, just keeps going up, so it doesn't, and then OPEB. So last year. cash, I'm happy to put more into the reserve fund for those one-time expenses. The pension, of course, just keeps going up, so it doesn't... And then OPEB. So last year, OPEB was $630,000 that we put in because we put that additional 400 in the fall. I'm also okay with doing nothing but waiting till the fall, unless you want to try to put in the 230. The issue is, I think we're going to have to go through department by department and see where the schools fall to make a determination on if we're going to fund anything in OPEB.
As long as we added what I consider to be the additional item, that said additional OPEB, because the retirees' health insurance in OPEB, one might think that the OPEB is in the 715 and it's not.
No, it was in the 995 though.
Right, no, I know. So, so my suggestion only is to break out OPEB into a separate line because, just so we want to keep track of it, I thought that the town meeting, when we did 400 extra thousand, that was a nice thing to do and I had intended on continuing with the 230. But I get it, this is really a tight, if I want to say, a tight budget here this year, although you're close to being balanced, I have a lot of items that I think I'm adding that are not on yet.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I agree with you, as long as there's a separate line, so the retirees' health insurance and OPEB, the and OPEB, just make it a separate line.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why we didn't, if you remember, was to make sure that OPEB got funded because it really is related to retirees' health insurance. So we put it into that line item, so it wasn't such a sore thumb that stood out.
Well, right, my problem is, is there's none in there this year and if you looked at it, you would think that it could be in there. We know it's not because it reduced to 715, but the pensions, retirees' health insurance could have reduced, which they haven't to.
And the health insurance, I'm using a 10% increase, will probably, Gateway will probably be voting on that either in February or March. It should, I expect maybe eight, nine percent.
No, when you sit on Gateway's financial review committee, are their finances pretty healthy?
Well, actually, they weren't because we had some pretty big claims. But just this past Thursday, we did get in credit from La Crosse for over $400,000. We also got in stock loss, a check for $265,000.
Okay.
And we're still outstanding with Self-Eats Vocational, they owe us over $100,000 because they left the group, but they claim stayed behind. So it was really good news at this last...
Okay. Yeah, it was funny because I was reviewing the audit report and, you know, clearly we're on the hook for anything on there as a financial contributor, so I just wanted to make sure that we...
On our future agenda, not until we, when we do the budgets, we can talk about the audit report, because I like the audit report. The suggestions were what we've been screaming about for a while.
Yeah.
About safeguards and financials and things like that.
Yeah, it's blanket language.
Yeah.
I read it and looked at it and said, yeah, I...
Well, we didn't even have the blanket language on the old ones either.
Right, well, it's a new auditor, they want to make sure that they give a letter that means something.
Make a good impression.
Exactly. Okay, so I don't have anything else on that page if...
Right, I, okay, want to skip to the next page and then I go back and start the page.
Yeah, I did want to check with Todd on what we have for any capital items unspent also. I know, you know, what's the story with the police station roof again?
I think it's of like 100,000.
120 or something?
It might be a little bit even lower. I think it was 108 last I knew.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's not much, right, there's not much left for the roof because we stopped our payments, it could be 100, but it's not...
I would say around 100.
Okay, so I guess, you know, in the Spring Town Meeting, the annual town meeting, we'll probably rescind that article and put that, wherever we want to put it, debt service stabilization, probably.
Right.
It's kind of all I have until we get to capital.
Okay, so...
What do you want to add?
Well, I do want to continue the OPEB contribution, now whether we do it in the Fall Meeting or not, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
But if the numbers came in, I would like to consider in the operational budget here, but not imperative.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Nate's repairs, I should call it Nate's repairs. The building commissioner's repair account last year was $50,000, which we spent every last time or will spend every last time. There were certain amounts in other accounts that had repairs and maintenance into them. I want to make sure that when we do the detail, that we have probably $100,000 in that account. We know we did 50 last year and I'll assume that we're repeating that same 50 in Nate's budget, or do you know if he did that, Rita? He submitted his budget?
Yes, I didn't even look at it though, Todd.
Okay, so I want to make sure that his 50 stayed and I'd like to add to that, but I don't think I have to add to it so much operationally, I'm taking it out of other departments' repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, there were two initiatives that we were trying to do, which were related to facilities management and IT expenses and to try to capture them out of everybody else's budget so that they were coming through a centralized person who was kind of responsible for all of those.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. If there's, anyone has a need to have repairs and maintenance in their own budget, you know, there might be an argument for that too, but I think that if it's coming through Nate for building repairs and facility, it's really facility and building repairs, is what we're trying to do.
So when we look at the detail, I want to make sure that his comes up to the 100. The balance of it is what I call okay. I say that the new growth hopefully is, I believe it's certainly understated the 250, but that's good. The estimated receipts, although I think that could also be another plug number if we needed to, because I think there's another $250,000 there. On the 40S reimbursement, can we get on Norm Oral's agenda or say, listen, you've got to fight for this?
And Mike Broderick.
So I want it in writing early on.
Just my text message on the night that the numbers were released, does that count?
Yeah, right.
What I sent to both of them?
So I'd like to see some hard copy of that. When I say see it, I want to make sure that we have a hard copy to both Norm and to Mike Broderick's asking for that. Your text is okay, but it should come, it should come from the town.
We should write a letter, yeah, and write a letter from the Board of St. Aggie.
It's imperative that we have a 40S structure for smart growth and you have to maintain that. On one hand, they want to promote it, the next hand, they want to take it away. So I think a letter, obviously, to explain that to both of them. I'm okay with all of that. The treasure and collective, did we add back in the...
The person, yeah.
Billy, that's fine, that's fine. And I get the law. I do want to say that our budget numbers, if we do them individually, are up higher. If I took Public Safety as an example, that could be up 5.7%, but it kind of gets better when you get into the Public Works because he didn't ask for anyone. So as long as, as long as the grant totals come out, I'm all right. Even Health and Human Services came up by 7.6%. So, but it's offset by the fire chief and the highway not asking for a lot of extra money yet. So I feel okay with the budget and I pretty much agree with the Mitzi and we can kind of go on to the, to the, to the cap.
Yeah, the only other piece would just be related to the restricted receipts account for the ambulance, where I wanted to talk, you know, make sure that you're, you're good with that too, because we've always, and I know that we said it at the last, I guess really when we were dealing with free cash and where the free cash came from, that if we put in, as we've always done, I think 450 was last year's ambulance receipts?
It's grown a little bit, but we can, when we do the detail, I have the detail of that.
Yeah.
Of what, of what we've had, which I, which I have, but I don't want to...
Yeah, we don't have to go into the specifics.
I don't want to pull that out for this meeting. So you could add more into the receipts from there, you could add another 50 or more, but you're talking about restricted...
Yeah, so what would happen would be, if you said 450, similar to what it was last year.
So that goes to five.
And once it goes to 450, then anything else goes into the restricted receipts account, which is done under Master General Law, such that it can be used for ambulance and...
I wanted to, years ago, do a restricted receipt for the entire gross amount because I wanted to make sure that the selectmen were not taking, when I shot circuiting the replacement of ambulances and fire trucks by not realizing the $500,000. I somewhat gave up that idea because we've not shot circuited them. We funded them very, very well, whether it be used equipment, whether it be the air packs, whether it be a new ambulance, whether it be a new pumper. We've funded it far in excess of a million dollars over the last two to three years.
Well, I think the only issue is that you can't use it for fire apparatus, so I wouldn't want to put the entirety of it in there. But I know when we said that, you know, if the ambulance receipts are consistently coming in over what we've budgeted, that there's an allocation there and then we could essentially take it off our capital plan for the most part.
Well, I was...
If I take it off the capital.
Well, I don't know that I do want to restrict it, even though I was a proponent originally, not, not this, not this second, but let me tell you why, is that I envisioned the marijuana income, this is my, my envisioning what you do with marijuana money. And we have very little of it coming in 2019, might I add, but, but I envisioned that the marijuana money would pay for capital and fix roads and possibly OPEB. But OPEB, if you're fixing roads and you're buying capital out of marijuana money, then I'm freeing up the marijuana money for OPEB. Now, we can't do that this year because, well, there are very little marijuana money coming in, but that's, that's the philosophical, what are we going to do with marijuana money? It's a moot point now because we don't have that money. So what, why would you want the restricted account over 450? Why, what do you think we're accomplishing by doing that?
So I think it's just putting a plan in place so that we're not looking three or four years down the road to when we need to replace an ambulance. The money's already there. Because what's happening is that it's getting swept into the general fund through free cash. So again, every time when we're looking at it, it's, you know, generated through receipts of the ambulance runs, but whether or not that money that is getting really allocated into capital projects, debt service stabilization or not, I'm just concerned about that being a recurring revenue source that's being used potentially in the operating budget. I think we've been fortunate.
We have not done that.
Right.
Since, when I say my tenure, not because, because of my tenure, we've not done that. As a matter of fact, we've gone the other way, that is, we've spent a fortune in the Fire Department, which we all agreed to do. So I don't feel strongly one way or another, but if we don't, if we're not able to buy our fire equipment and the ambulances and capital out of the marijuana money and fix our roads, then shame on us, because that's what I had it here not for. So we can say, what would we do with the money? So I don't care if 50 goes up there, you know, whatever that amount is.
Don't we have almost a million in our capital projects, huh?
About 983.
Yeah, I think we're just under a million, but the other easier option too is we can have as many stabilization accounts as we want and you could dedicate a stabilization account for fire equipment apparatus. And in your financial policies, say that anything over 450 in ambulance receipts will go into that stabilization account to purchase.
I don't, I don't, I don't object to that. I was going to do the original accounts, that the entire income went into that.
But I think it's a little bit...
But we've never, we've never shot, we've never shoted them. It's never been an issue with us to ever shot them. It might be when I see issues, but...
Yeah, I just look at it from a perspective of setting up the town for, it's same thing with OPEB, you know, we're not going to be here forever and I have concerns over the long-term viability of certain things. Speak for yourself.
Speak for yourself, speak for yourself, I might be here longer than you think. I, I, I don't disagree. For the 50,000, it doesn't make any difference to me, but we've not shoted the Fire Department by any figure.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that. I think what it is, is if you could look at the capital plan and you could say, all right, right now we've got, it's fiscal year 2024, 275. We don't have to even plan for that, that if you were really kind of doing it through restricted receipts, it would get to that point regardless.
That's okay, my, and I don't mind the 50 because you'll always need far in excess of that for the Fire Department. You need well in excess of $100,000 here, if not 150 is what we spent. So the 50 doesn't, doesn't really bother me. So that's okay. The restriction of the 50, part of whatever it is, anything over 450, anything over 5, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay. All right, you want to talk capital?
Capital. So the capital, in my general speech, it changes so dramatically year to year that if you did a five-year comparison, the things we asked for weren't even on last year's. Now, if something broke, I can see that, but the amount of capital that we spent the last three years is probably three times what we spent in the previous five years before that. And we had the money, we did it to free cash, once you buy it, you don't have to replace it. But I sometimes think that it gets to be a wish list that if I said, the economy's going to hell, we're not going to fund any capital this year, I think I'd buy one police cruiser. And, and I don't think the town would be in jeopardy. So we spend, if I took, if I, we can go line item by line item as we do the detailed budgets and we have the managers in front of us, we can certainly address that. But if the budgets are going up far in excess of 3%, then the capital has to come from the free cash. And as we've continually increased the estimated receipts, we're going to run out of the free cash money too. So we can do this.
Yeah, no, I totally understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we don't have to go through line item by line item on this, but...
We can do a little bit.
I think that...
We got, how many more minutes? You said we had a half hour?
I said we had two when we stepped up.
Two hours?
No, we have one more minute.
One more minute. Police, I'm generally okay with a couple of cruises. Certainly when we review the mileage, we need all the detail to substantiate these. So I'm somewhat okay, somewhat okay with the police. I don't know that I want to do an unmarked cruiser, but, but we'll do the mileage. The Fire Department, I'm okay with Jaws of Life. And I guess the command vehicle certainly looks like it's rusting as it sits in the parking lot. But the big item, obviously, for 2020 is to replace engine number two, which has had this sticker problem where the manufacturer, or the repair manufacturer that we had down, came down and has supplied a sticker for it this year. So that has moved, that has moved in from 2022. If in fact, it's unsafe and I'm not applying it, it is, he puts the sticker on it. I just, we just bought ambulances recently, bought a new fire pumper for 550, bought the ladder truck for seven, and I have that on my detail. bought the ladder truck for seven, and I have that on my detail. I have, I have no desire for a new pumper in 2020. If it's unsafe, take it out of service.
So, but that's from a financial perspective, right?
Well, not necessarily, for both. It's either safe or unsafe. If it's unsafe, you shouldn't be using it. If it has a sticker, then one says, do we want to argue ourselves in the corner that it's unsafe? So if it's unsafe, we shouldn't be using it, however you want to define that, then take it out of service.
And replace it with?
With nothing.
And I'd like to know what the fire chief would have to say about that.
With nothing. But that's the point. If he wants to put a sticker on it, I'm not implying you should drive it if it's unsafe. But he's putting his backing behind it. So he's still using it. He put a sticker on it. So nothing's changing between now and July 1.
So we'll have that conversation.
We can have that conversation.
I know from the perspective of financially, you know, again, when we look at the overall capital plan and we're looking at what we're looking at for debt and what our debt service is looking like, we'll talk about funding sources.
We can fund anything. It's taxpayers' money, we've got reserves, we can fund them. It's a philosophical, if it has a sticker, it has a sticker. If it's old, it's old.
All right, we'll ask the fire chief to provide us with his opinion, not now.
Not an opinion, really, more than, more than an opinion, the safety aspect.
I just want to mention, too, on the yellow for emergency management, I haven't even had a chance to meet Mike on the generator.
What's the deal with the generator? Haven't we given money for that generator every single year?
Seventeen was put in, put in when you were born. Seventeen, seventeen's been there since you were born. We've talked about a generator.
I thought we allocated another, like, 50.
No, no, we never did.
Is it appropriate for me to give an update on that generator?
We appropriated, we appropriated money for a generator at the senior center. And we did not buy it. We appropriated 40, 50,000 dollars for that.
It was last year.
The generator, if, if the nine.
You guys aren't in executive session yet?
No, we are not.
But I gave him two minutes, we're already over at this point.
We are not.
We can cut this off.
Public safety communication, 292. That should be under the police, if in fact you need the money. Should be under the building.
Which one, public safety?
Public safety, 292.
What's yellow, so I know what that is.
And then, and then the highway, obviously, is a big number. And obviously, the park commission.
I haven't gotten there yet.
You've got to make sure that they're not going to spend more than what they have. And if they don't keep $50,000 to the side, they're crazy.
They do.
Oh, no, not, not a few.
That's this year's.
Oh, I get it.
Okay, so, you missed it, we're.
We're done with the budgets. For now.
Rita, do you want this back to the old column?
So Mitzi, when do you want to schedule, begin to schedule departmental?
Yeah, we should do that, because I do want to talk.
You're talking man pop.
Well, I guess the question is, I want to do capital first. I'd like to get that out of the way. But we need to just get the school numbers in, just to see exactly where we fall. But if you want to do, we could schedule a capital and operating budget for the major department heads, which I guess I would say would be fire, police, and highway. So if we have those conversations where it's both at the same time, then at least.
We made those marathon sessions, so.
Yeah, I don't want to do.
Either the second or third person shouldn't show up at the meeting or we should give everyone a lot more time.
Yeah. Yeah, so schedule-wise.
Sooner rather than later, well, the school budget.
Yeah, the school will just plug in. So that's, I mean, that's an ongoing, um, issue, but, um, that's a holiday. February 19th, does that work at all? Want to do Tuesday, start that week.
That's school vacation, do you know, do you think anyone, anyone would be available?
I can.
I'm just, just a thought, sometimes they're not available.
We could hire a magician and they can have a magician and we could feed them food in the other room.
For the kids.
I thought you meant for the FinCom.
Well, for them, no, that would be for the school committee.
Learning laws.
Magicians, they're standard number.
Okay.
No.
Well, do you want to do, we could do those three during the day, like one of those, right?
Yeah, yeah, during the day, yeah.
Well, no, FinCom won't be able to make it. So are we looking at, like, the first week in March?
The following week isn't the three months.
I might be able to do.
The following week is March, isn't it, pretty much?
Well, we have a meeting on the 25th.
We typically stop meeting on March 7th, the first week in March.
So what if we did, like, March 4th, 5th, like those days that week? Does that work?
Wednesday, 5th?
Yeah. If we need to do, like, a Wednesday or Thursday, I could arrange something in advance, too, if that's.
I know, I know, I have a couple of appointments, I'll just look at it later.
Try for Tuesday, Wednesday, 5, 6. Yeah, I just need to confirm on the 6th, though, but that should probably be okay.
Okay. And you're thinking, like, 1 o'clock in the afternoon?
No, no, it would have to be at night because FinCom has to show up.
I'm sorry, sure.
And then by then, we'll have all the numbers.
Night's okay anyways, night's okay, it's just a day.
Okay.
And, right, we better do it quick with them because I don't know who's going to be on there after April's election, no one.
Right, we have to get that kind of squared away beforehand.
We encourage the taxpayers to take out papers and run for these committees.
Nobody's taken out papers for FinCom?
Not that I.
Not that I know of.
We have two spots open?
Yes, Jennifer's runs out. She was filling.
Right. Does she know, has she been told?
Yes. And then Dan Holland isn't running again.
Well, at least we'll have three, still the core.
Robust, robust democracy here in Lakeville.
All right. Fewer and fewer people.
Did I hear you, or five selectmen?
We don't have three.
Maybe there should be six.
Or seven, right? Go with seven.
Well, then you need four to show up, though.
Right.
That's a problem.
And you would never.
We'd never.
Watch out, we might get someone to run that we don't want to, so that's all right.
It's true, but I doubt it.
All right, so that's scheduled.
So the 5th and the 6th, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Any, any old and new business, then we'll be heading into executive.
Well, do you want to revisit number two?
What's number two?
The John Paul Park?
Oh, oh, the John Paul Park. Porter Parties, which is number two. Aaron, there's a, you can see the agenda in number two. Mike Nolan came before us. If you go to the second page, it's pretty much a trailer that they can bring into John Paul Park. The wheel goes, they let the trailer down, if you will. And the handicap bathroom is to the right and the men and women's room is to the left. And it's handicap accessible. And Mike certainly alluded to, there have been many plans over the last, since he came back, but they've really been kicking around for the last five to seven years, where we currently have just Porter Parties out in the open today. And there's been many proposals. One was funded by taxpayers who would donate and build a building with a pad with a shelter to it, putting in Porter Parties into that building. Nice Porter Parties, might I add, into that building. That was one plan. There was another plan where they actually would build a totally new structure that's been designed. People have donated the design time, the architectural plans. There was a bunch of people who were going to donate certain aspects of their time. It was a pretty large group. And that would have necessitated one or two things, either a septic system and/or a tight tank. And, and that was proposed, when I say a number of years ago, three to five years ago. That all snarled up in procurement was my understanding and kind of went away. This procurement, instead of helping towns saying what's right for the taxpayers, it just snarls everything up and things just go nowhere. So you had, you have in front of you a trailer. You've had in front of you updated Porter Parties in an enclosed building. And you have a structured building with a tight tank. The Parks Department come to us forward with this, which is about $50,000 to do. And Mike was here gracious enough to do it. I had said, my take on it is, it's your money, spend it as you will. I think we allocated $45,000 for capital budget that could be spent in 2019. Rita brought this before us because we have a procedure where anything over $10,000 we weren't brought, brought to the selectmen. I'm not for this project, so I would vote against it. Because to me, free, free is better than paying $50,000 for something. So I didn't want to bring it to a vote because it wouldn't have passed. So we said, if you come, we can bring this to a vote. It's about a $50,000 bill. They keep it in the park for the three or four months. Winterize it, a cert, an agency would winterize it. They obviously have to pump it every week, clean it every week, that type of thing. They would winterize it, bring it to the Ted Williams camp for the winter, cover it over. Next year, bring it back.
Yeah, it's kind of like a, like a more robust.
Yeah, you see, yeah, you see them at the fairs all the time.
Yeah, no, I've been in one of these things, so we got to learn more.
Yeah, so, so that's.
But it's like a trailer.
Exactly what it is.
So, but the parks behind this, right?
Parks, this is their proposal, it's before us only because we wanted the selectmen to approve through the procurement a purchase above the $10,000.
Okay.
So we can, we have the spiel, we can bring it to a vote now. Any further discussions?
Yeah, I mean, I was just talking to Mike about the fact that, you know, they've been trying to do this for five years or do something for five years. And the issue has always been when people want to come forward with free, that you run into procurement, you run into issues. And if they, you know, my opinion, if they want to use this money in this manner and this is how they've decided that they want to do it, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, it's the park commission, it's up to them to determine it. I don't necessarily, I agree with John in the sense that it may not be the best solution, but it's their decision to make, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Yep, okay.
And award the bid to AMS Global?
Correct.
I'll second.
And any further discussion, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
No. Are we ready for executive session? I'll just, I'll just read it only because I've been doing so far. If possible, executive session pursuant to Master General Law, C38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the fire union and the police union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board and the GSO declares, and we do declare, in pursuant to Master General Law, C38, 21A3, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Saret versus Lakeville et al., MCAD, Dockete, number 18, NEM 02098, and EEOC, number 16C, 2018, 02162, in the matter of Trokey versus Lakeville et al., Plymouth Superior Court, CA, number 1783, CV 00700, holding the meeting in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board and the GSO declares in pursuant.
John, don't read the next one, I didn't have the minutes ready.
Okay. That's it, so in pursuant to Master General Law, C38.
Just the bottom.
And now return to open session. That's the motion.
I'll second.
Aye.
On that, aye, and probably.
Okay.